Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Fond du Lac to order. With a roll call vote, please.
Chisholm.
Here.
Wabowski. Here. Hack.
Here.
Streeter. Will.
Alright, we have five and we'll give them four. Report on public notices, please, Mr. Sadoff.
Public notices were sent or emailed or sent an email to the Fond du Lac reporter, WFDL News, and also KFIZ 107.1, as well as posted at the municipal building in the Village of North Fond du Lac, the district office, and at US Bank on Thursday, March 16th, 2017.
Alright, thank you. Please rise for the pledge allegiance as we often do.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from the last meeting were distributed to the board members in the board member package. Does anyone have any questions or comments or corrections to the minutes as they were published? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as presented. Do you wish to...
I would love to do the treasury report. Alright, cash balance on hand for February 27th, 2017 was $651,823.21. Total receipts, including receipts and a transfer from investment accounts, were $1,702,875.07. There's a total of $1,602,392.99 in expenditures. Cash balance on hand as of March 20th, 2017 is $100,482.81. Bills recommended for payment shown on the attached list dated March 20th, 2017, including pre-approved checks for $913,033.36 and board meeting checks of $301,915.92. So, a motion needed for a total approved checks of $1,214,949.28.
Thank you, Mr. Sadoff.
You're welcome.
Any board members have any questions about the expenditures that were listed on the board package? Seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the $913,032.36. Nope. Oh, I guess, I'm sorry. It is $1,214,949.21. If there's no other questions, roll a couple, please.
Steve.
Yes.
Will.
Chisholm. Yes. Go back. Thanks for pointing, please. No donations, no correspondence. Slow. Alright. You said our student council rep is coming later.
She just ran by. I'm guessing hopefully she runs by two more times and then she'll be here.
Alright, we'll slide the student council report to later on in the agenda. Now, it is time at 7:04 PM for citizens input. So this is an opport...
We have a lot.
Yeah, we have. Usually there's nobody here. So this is an opportunity for anyone that's present to address the board during this period of citizens input. So, I'll turn it over to you. Anyone have any...anything to say that you wish to address the board?
We just came for the show.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, seeing none, then I will declare the citizens input portion of the meeting closed at 7:05 PM. Next on the agenda, I don't J super gen support.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. Opportunity right now to celebrate some great things from our young artists to our winter all-conference awardees. We had two more this year than we've had in the past year. Last year and more than the year before. We're also going to honor our world champion representatives from the state of Wisconsin and also academic bowl winner. So we have a lot of celebrating to do. But no further ado, I'd like to turn it over, if you would, to our art goddess, Ms. Alice Tzakas, who after, I believe, you started teaching her when you were three years old, so 30-plus years of teaching. 39-plus years of teaching, will be retiring at the end of this year. And one of the things that I am...Alice does a lot of things, but how she goes out of her way to make sure to recognize with her unbelievable eye for quality and artistic ability to nominate kids that not only does she see it, but they also get recognized at the state level. So if you...I think we have something with our young artists here, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Tzakas, if you want to just talk a little bit about each one of them.
Okay. Should they go up there then? Are you going to show their artwork?
Yep.
There we go. Okay, well, we will go with Allison first.
Yep, Allison, come on down. Alright.
Now, when this piece was selected, because I get to select five pieces to send to the regional show, kind with dark eyes, is that what you have to title it? This is oil pastel. It doesn't translate quite as clearly on the screen, but every single time I walk past this piece in the hall, and that's how I pick the pieces, they just go, "Whoa, take me!" They have to have that thing. And Allison actually is the only student that I recall in all the years that I've taught that I have sent her work to regional show twice. I sent a piece last year. It was an owl temper painting, amazing piece. It did not move on to state, and I had angst when I kept walking by and going, "That's the one that has to go." And I thought about it and then, you know, she didn't get a chance to go to state, so she's at state now, so good to be out.
Your art?
I think she's been speechless.
Excellent. Thank you. And we also have Allison, your dad's here, so thank you very much for your artistic genetics.
And Kimberly is not here, at least you didn't see her. Kimberly qualified for the regional show, and this is in...if you look at the other monitor, you can see it a little clearly, clearer. This is another oil pastel based on and inspired by... No, that's much better. Claude Monet. So it's an impressionistic version of water lilies. And hers had just a really wonderful elegant use of her focal point and then her quiet areas where iris, lovely work of art. She was at the regional show. Oh, this is my Brooke over here. Now, she actually set another precedent too, both Allison and Brooke, because this is the first time I've had siblings go on to state show, because her sister was also at state show, but that's another long sort of story about how they lost their artwork and didn't show up there. So that was very tragic. But this, we did some wonderful little temper flamigos in her detail and her...the way she put her paint down and the way she filled her canvas, basically, extraordinary work, very, very high level, especially for grade three. And congratulations, Brooke. I'm hoping that the judges at state will love it as much as I.
Nope.
Who's Reese? Reese Therk is a highly, highly capable first grader and our first project of the year, if anybody didn't notice, we did frogs. And all different versions, different kinds. This is first grade. It is delightful. And she qualified for the regional show, and this is her family of frogs. And if you really look at all the tiny nuances in there, the little tiny pink frog hiding in the background and the little orange one sneaking over there and all the pattern and design she has, and then she's in heaven, a little fly up there that somebody's looking at. And it's a very sophisticated first grade drawing for their first project of the year. It's exceptional. So, congratulations. This is Katie Zarate. She did qualify for state, and someone actually won art. Someone I know sent me some pictures. She serendipitously happened to be at the state capitol, and she goes, "Oh, I recognize the work." So this was one of the pieces that I received a picture of just today. This is, of course, an orange frog made with glue. That's the black glue and then watercolor and then ink rolled over the top to give it this wonderful artsy quality to it. So, and incredibly well crafted. Katie's an important graduate, an excellent little artist. So congratulations on both of you, as well as all three girls. Yay!
And I just want to take a second with Alice here to thank her for your 39 years of awesome service to our school district and our kids and how many hearts that you've touched with your artistic passion, and you will never be replaced, but we appreciate all that we do, and all I can hope is the next people come, for the next person that comes in, recognizes spends about a quarter of the time you do identifying our great young artists so that they can get the recognition. So thank you for all that you've done for us.
I think the comment that I heard when it was announced that you were retiring is summed up into all of our hearts. I heard somebody go, "Nooo."
Well, thank you very much. Next, what we'll do is we have a great opportunity. I have Mike McKell here who's going to go through a...go through a summary of the athletic season, and we also have some of our coaches and athletes, all-conference athletes here to recognize. So I'll turn it over to Mike.
Oh, he's made it. Nice. You okay?
No, I'm good.
Alright, good, good. Alright, and then if I have with everybody here, if I miss somebody, just come on up. We'll share a little bit in there, or if you feel uncomfortable coming up, at least stand to get some recognition. We go on to the first one here. This will be...I gave it to Karen Hoff, and this will be on the school district website, so I'm not going to filter in here. We do have a new OurSchool page. It's a little bit more palatable platform you can go to for those people that don't know what OurSchool is. It's our scheduling for athletics. If you go on there and highlight on there, you can actually go up and get...if we have any changes with the schedule in spring, but the spring's going to be wonderful, we're not going to have any changes or any rain or things like that, but if you sign up for what your son or daughter is involved in, whether it be baseball, softball, et cetera, and if there is a change, you can get notifications via your email or a text message sent to you as well, and then you can keep track of that. There is also an app that is out there for OurSchool, and you can get that. We have our link to our North Island Athletics page, our postseason student survey, our coaching staff, and other quick links that we have as well for you to take a look at into Peru's school. So we'll start with boys' basketball. Underneath that link, you can take a look at, as we have it, and I have it broke up in a different section, but we'll use boys' basketball for an example. We won't go through the rest of them because I do have a link that we have, but it's a recap of the entire conference schedule, how things panned out for the conference. We can just go back to the regular screen then. And it's what Mr. Sadoff has there as well, but you can take a look at the links. I summarized it just based on North Fond du Lac as we went through it, so if you can go ahead. And just once again, congratulations to those young people striving day in and day out to do the extra beyond their academics and being involved, their hard work and dedication to, whether it's on the field, the courts, or the mat, I can't forget that, otherwise Doug would be out for me, the competition that you paid off, and a salute to you tonight for all that you've done and striving and your efforts and dedication and pride in our school district. So for boys' basketball, our head coach is Chris Abreu, and I know, Mr. Wazadelic...
Come on up, Dawson.
This is a little older picture here with it, but I do like the longer hair and longer look. It's always wonderful to see Dawson out on the court. And just getting some of the old records from some of the old guard that are still around for North Fond du Lac. Dawson tied our all-time scoring record with 41 points in a game, and so with the hot hand there, and so congratulations with the all-time scoring. Dawson, I apologize, earned a second-team all-conference for us this year, and I look forward to seeing Dawson leading our team next year on the court and off the court. He's always a wonderful young athlete to watch and to play when he hits that jumper and it goes in and, you know, the arm is still up like they do in the pros, and he's turning around and going back. So, excellent, great attribute to our school and a representative as well. So very nice. The girls happen to have, and I don't know if there's any girls here, girls have their end-of-the-year party tonight. You know, tough with the girls. Softball started with, soccer started, so Gary has it at the Village Park tonight. We had two girls earn on our second-team all-conference, Nicole Scott, she is a junior, and also honorable mention, Kayla Dool as well. The girls' basketball team kind of fell in the route of the Wisconsin Badgers. They were given a low seed in the tournament and came out, defeated Campbell Sport, who they had defeated originally in the year, then went on to defeat Winnicott County, that was the top seed in their side of the pool, and then fell short at the end to Columbus. But the girls had a wonderful season. First time, I think, and I forget, 2000 and some odd, but that we beat Zemri Springs too. It's always nice when you get that. So there was a couple of pictures there that you got the girls in action there in the game. Wrestling, and this is as many years, and if Doug would like to come up and talk, you can, because I know how you love to talk, and I don't want to give you that with it. So, we can have Doug come on up. We have Mr. Cohen come on up as well. You know, and I'm not...this is...
Let's let Dave sit there and just have him work.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Thanks for saving my life.
And just a little bit for those people there, you know, Dave Cohen did start wrestling here at North Fond du Lac, and we are beyond 50 years of wrestling at North Fond du Lac. And so Doug, I'll let him talk a little bit about the team and that. And I know I don't have everybody's picture up there, but I was able to grab some from the reporter for the conference with some of the wrestlers at the conference meet this year.
We had a very successful season this year, one of the best in school history. If you count up there, we have eight members on the all-conference team out of 14 weight classes. So over half of our team made the all-conference team. So we did very well, and I'm happy to report that six of those eight are not seniors. So we will be back in force next year to have even more fun.
And just a little bit different to add in here, since, you know, wrestler to wrestler talk, just something a little bit different with wrestling is like cross-country. These are positions, and all of the positions, you know, have been earned, you know, with basketball and that, but for a first teamer to make first-team all-conference, you have to win the conference wrestling tournament. And so to be second team, you're second place, and honorable mention is third place.
Correct.
Just so everybody knows.
Yes. So our honorable mention, the guys that finished third at the conference tournament, we had Eder Godoy, Abe Gevel, and then Marcus Orlandoni, who's one of our springs athletes. And then our second team, I know I've got a few of them here, so you guys can come on up. Ethan Ingram, Dakota Moss, Zach Choat, and Austin Hernandez. The guys were in the conference finals and fell a little short, but they did a great job, you know, getting to the conference finals. And then our first-team all-conference, Andrew, come on up here. Andrew won the conference meet this year.
It is nice calling my own son's name up here. My wife, at one point this season, told him, "You have to be patient with your father. He's been waiting since the day you born to happen," so we had a lot of fun. But it was a great year. I really, I can't talk enough about the season we had and finished second. It tied for second in the conference with Laconia overall, so it was a lot of fun, and we're looking forward to big things next year.
And I did add in on the bottom there with Dakota qualifying for sectionals.
Yes, Dakota was our only sectional qualifier.
It just didn't follow in on the sheet there as well.
And finished fourth at sectionals, so just missed our shot at Madison, so something to look forward to next year. So, a lot of good stuff happening.
You know, and once again, you know, a lot of this, you know, happens behind the scenes, you know, a lot with Samantha at the high school. We have the gals in the front office that oftentimes I spend too much time chit-chat when I come in and saying some different things and that, and, you know, without, you know, Maria, and she's the best known no person around, you know, when I come and say, "Hey, do we have money in the budget for this?" You know, I'm just teasing. Maria does a wonderful job. As our CFO here for our school district, we're lucky to have her. Karen Hoff, the behind-the-scenes with getting our website up and running and keeping everything going, you know, and we have Bonnie Beert with all the finances and that, because the officials always ask, you know, "When are they going to get paid?" Because we do vouchers, and I say, "Hey, soon as I send that voucher in, they're cutting a check and it's likely split out." So we've never had anybody call to say they've never been paid, and so, you know, that testament goes out to those people at the front office and at the head office at the high school and everybody else involved in between. So just once again, you know, it's fun, you know, because I get an opportunity as part of my job to go and see these kids in action and to see what they can do on the court, on the mat, out in the field, and all the different things they strive to do, the teamwork that's involved in the process that takes place. It's a unique opportunity that I get to be able to see the kids here in our community on a regular basis, and it's things that I can see and make connections with them as well. So I really appreciate it. It's really nice. And so, we're always working on our Oriole Nation and branding our Oriole Nation name, and those are things we're working for. An alumni website, they kind of gather together. We made contact ironically at the Columbus game. One of our former athletes in basketball would like to continue the alumni game, so we made contact with Chris and Gary Keel in having another alumni game, coming back for basketball with that, and then, you know, works with Hall of Fame for us and getting going in that process as well. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. With Oriole Nation be ready, we have a wallet weekend coming up. Come on out, and we need a lot of people to sign up, so check out the website. Oriole Nation is coming up, and we've got calendar sales coming up. Sell the calendars, looking to sell 1,000. We raised over $70,000 for that. Friendship PTO, middle school PTO, all-grade levels, music parents. We are one of, I think we are the only school, and I know the state, that has one booster club, well, besides football, but we're working on that. That works all together for everything, so make sure there isn't a whole bunch we ask, but just participate by calendars. Alright. Now, moving on to the...to our next. Alright, so now it's time to honor even some more students for the great things that are going on, and it's time to get the academic bowl medalists. Do we have any of our academic bowlers here? Alright, come on up, Dominic. Dominic, you're doing that math mathematics when he was in kindergarten, I believe. So Dan Hyvley and some high school educators get a group together, and we went to WLA this year, and you want to talk a little bit about what academic bowl is?
So, you get to the school, they provide dinner, and then you go into individual testing rooms for 60-minute periods, and you take a test of 45 questions. And then after that, you go into, they get scored, then there's a team portion, which all the members from math, science, social studies, and English all go to compete, and then the other night to tally up all the scores, and whoever team gets most points wins for the school districts.
And we took fourth. A little controversy, but I know that Doug worked hard there. And then also, it looks like so Michael Crapley took second in biology, Xavier Lasse second in algebra one, Haley Vadenis second in geometry, Dominic took second in advanced mathematics, and then Paige Sadoff took second in algebra. So thank you very much for representing us. I always thought it was silly when people said you had to add letters, but you know, you're way past that. Good work. Alright, next state power lifters. Where are...I saw Meredith, I saw Michael. Get on up here. Where do we go? I saw Ms. McCourt in the back. Yes, come on up, guys. Let's hear it for our state qualified power lifter. Coached by Jenny Harney and Tom Wantey, and what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mazorski, and he's going to fill us a little bit in about powerlifting and how we did this year.
Tom? Started off interesting, I guess. I mean, the overall focus and goal of this is to lift as much weight as possible. That's all you've got to do, and I think I did fairly well this year making the state. I'm really mad at my squad, but other than that, it was a fairly good year.
And how many different lifts do you guys have?
We have back squat, bunge, and deadlift.
Okay. And then you just add those together, and then you're divided by a weight class?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
And you get three tries at each of the lifts, so...
And in order to get to state, what do you need to do?
It's different qualifying totals for each of the different weight classes. So mine, I had to do 1,200 pounds out of the three lifts, and they had different ones.
And what was yours, Meredith?
Mine was 550 pounds.
Okay, and Ms. McCourt?
Mine was 485.
485. Alright, so Meredith, a little bit about, I know that you kind of balanced your squad by how much just to make it to state. Tell us a little bit about that.
My deadlift, we upped it, was it like 50 pounds? Up 50 pounds. We just slapped it on there, you know, go big or go home. I went big and I went to state.
Yeah, excellent. So, and then, and you're a...what grade are you?
I'm a junior.
Junior, so you have another year. You're senior, right? And Ms. McCourt, you're a freshman. Tell us what it's like. How does a freshman put so much weight on their shoulders and throw it around and on their arms?
Good question.
Yeah, so what did you get? What did you like about powerlifting?
It was really fun because all the people that you like do it with become really close to you, so you all can like, you all something to relate to.
Yep, and I was talking with Doug, his daughter Leah is also state qualifier, and he was saying, and you want to tell me a little bit about what you saw that was so exciting, or a way of Jenny, but about the team?
I noticed when I go to the powerlifting meets, the kids on the team seem more excited for their teammates when they make lifts than they do themselves. It was really, and you know, especially Leah and Anna Merramonte, when Anna McCourt was lifting, they would get very excited every time Anna completed a lift, so it was, it was very neat to see the camaraderie amongst the teammates.
Excellent. So, are you two guys, you in it for next year for powerlifting? Alright, you don't have a year left?
I don't really.
Alright, and now, I don't know if we have ever had a world qualifying team from our district, so I'm going to turn it over quickly to the guru of vex robotics, Mr. Hamer, if you ought to come on up, and you can kind of probably, Mr. Zagar, you know, these are, you got a, you got a good lineage of robotics here, and I just want to say... And I just want to say thank you to Kurt and also to Michael and Christie also, and everybody else. Robotics, Vex Robotics in our school district has just flourished. It started, I think it was Stefanis and Bonlenders back in the day. Started with one team. We have five middle school teams, one high school team. Our middle school, all five of them qualified for state. One of them finished tied for third, which was really exciting. And now we had, our, our high school has been doing really well. Used to be the days when we'd say, "Hey, we want to be like Xavier, we want to be like this," and that's kind of changed around a little bit. So I'll turn it over to you guys, kind of tell us about the journey and introduce our world qualifiers.
Sure. Well, like Aaron said, we had a really good year this year. Five middle school teams, which is kind of a challenge, but we, we kind of roped in some mentors, some parents that got involved, and they helped us pretty much run this year. So, the way robotics works is we're not, we're one big program, but we have individual teams. Like you said, we've got five middle school teams and one high school team. And they've all done good. Previous years, we've been fortunate to get like maybe two to three trophies. This year, our program brought home ten trophies, so we've done. It's been an awesome year. Like you said, we've had great success. And I guess at this point, unless you want to...
Yeah, I guess one of the things, one of the things the boys do, not only are they building the robot, and not only are they driving the robot to make it do a particular task, and all the teams have to do the, the same task and they're scored as, well, I'll let the boys explain that, because part of what they do is they have to do judges' interviews and they're, they're sitting before a panel of judges who, they're explaining the robot to, they're in an interview situation, being asked questions and whatever. So I'm gonna invite the team up and let them do that right here for you guys, okay?
And the team is, introduce the guys since they're coming up.
Yep, this is, this is Michael Zagar.
Sprocket.
Sprocket. Yeah, we're in the bot, too, man.
So you got Sprocket, who else we got?
We got Sprocket, we got Matthew Miller coming up. Austin Hammer coming up. And this member this year, Andrew Schmitz. Step back. Tell everybody what you do.
All right, so every year, there's a different series of games that is changed up every year. This year, the game is called Starstruck. There's cubes and stars on the field and pretty much you gotta try to defend other robots from getting stars over and you gotta also try to get stars and cubes on the other side, so... Yeah, there's a fence, three parts of the fence. There's a middle part that's lower and the two parts on the side are taller and the fence, the fence is like directly in the middle. So you have, you get an alliance partner and you have one half of the field and you're against two other robotics teams that are on the others, on the other side, yeah. All right, so when, when we build a robot, we have to make an engineering notebook. We just document all of our progress, our ideas, our problems. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, go ahead. Keep stepping. So they, they went through, how many times did you guys redo the towers? Just talk, talk about some of the trials.
Um, our base, like our drive with the wheels, we've tried, we've tried about five different bases and three or four different towers to be able to lift. It's, part of the game is about strength and speed and one of the biggest problems is trying to both the strength and speed. And also defending was a big problem because some robots were just made to defend and some robots were just made to just throw cubes and stars over and we tried to get a little bit of both, so...
Yeah, they did, they did very well at state. They had a lot of problems at state. We showed up that morning and the brain didn't work, so there was a lot of stress over that. And then, once, once we finally got that, what, what happened to the axle? Remember that?
Uh, yeah. An axle just twisted and snapped apart like right in between gears, which we've never seen or had before and axles are usually pretty strong. So, that was something new.
And all under pressure too. There was like not even five minutes between matches, so they had to partially disassemble that tower in between matches and get it going.
How many matches that day? There were literally over a hundred matches that day. So what they do is they pair teams arbitrarily as alliance partners. So there's two teams on one side of the field, two teams on the other side of the field, and they'll go against each other trying to score points. And that pairing, that alliance is, is rotating. So you may be allied with somebody in one match and competing against them in another match. So they rotated through over a hundred matches that day. I think it was a hundred and twenty? Is that right, at state? So it's, it's two minutes on the, on the field of holding your breath watching them and five minutes in between of, of heart attacks.
So, and to kind of explain where, where, you know, this program is at statewide, there was ninety, like ninety-seven high school teams statewide. Only forty-eight were at the state tournament, so, I mean, you're looking at the state champions right here, so that's huge for not just this program, but for the state, because now they're moving on to an even bigger stage, which Aaron mentioned as the Worlds. There's over twenty thousand teams worldwide, only five hundred of them are going to this and that's in Louisville, Kentucky, April eighteenth through the twenty-fourth.
So these boys are gonna need to learn a new way of communicating because some of their alliance partners will not speak English. So, there's teams from Saudi Arabia and Japan and China and Egypt, so, I'm sorry?
Egypt.
Egypt.
And then who was your, so you had, so like in your championship, you had two other schools or teams that were your alliance partners, who were they?
Yeah. We were paired up with VHS Crusaders and Red Fox, they're from, I don't remember where they're from.
Both from the valley.
Fox Valley, yeah.
So, part of the Vex game is, like I said earlier, is the engineering notebook. And before all the matches start early in the morning, we have judges' meetings, so we go to judges in a room just as our team mentors are allowed in to just to listen, but it's just us talking to mentors. They ask us questions, we show us, or we show them how our robot works, how, how we want it to work, what it's supposed to do. We talk about our problems that we've had, how we fix them. One of the big questions that they ask is if we had another week for the, if we had another week, like what would we change? So, that's what we think about like when we're from, like, like after competition, we think about if we have another week, what would we change?
Now you have, you had a month.
Yeah.
You had a month since the state competition to get to Worlds. What are you guys doing now?
Um, we are actually building a completely new robot. It's pretty similar, it's just better.
Stronger, stronger.
So, this one's pretty beat up, so we're building a brand new one that, just for one match, but Worlds is three days of beating up, so...
And you can add two robots?
Yeah.
You could, you could register one, but they'll have like the, the pinchers, they may have a spare pincher ready to go, so they could have duplicate parts, they just can't register two robots.
And last year at Worlds, there was thirty-five countries represented from around the world there last year. So it's, it's pretty, and Andrew had the wonderful, I believe it was Andrew that had the wonderful idea of making up cards. You want to tell them about that?
Well, we're thinking about making flashcards and on the flashcards, it's gonna tell us all of our strengths and weaknesses and we're gonna put them in different languages so we can just go around handing them to all the other teams so they can understand what our strengths and weaknesses are about a robot.
And just to give you a heads up, my sons are the two. It's all, it's lobbying, like they were part of an alliance, they had to get picked. So if they didn't have strength and weaknesses and do well during those qualifying things, they wouldn't have gotten picked by the other group to be part of that alliance at once. A lot of it has to do with personality, working hard, doing just a small thing like that, all of a sudden you have a great team, they're like, "Hey, we'll go with these guys." So that whole, it's not just that, it's the whole idea of getting people to, to like you, to want to work with you and to, and to do some different...
It's a big communication game.
And weaknesses aren't necessarily a total bad thing because letting the other teams, your alliance partners, know what your weaknesses are, are, is, can be good because their strength may be where your robot is weak. So that helps you both on the same field, competing with each other, to be even better. So, that, there's a reason and a strategy why they let them know also, this is where a robot's good at, but here's where a robot isn't good at, what's your robot good at, you know, and they complement each other and work together.
So, overall, great, it's been a great program and kudos to these boys. They did really, really good this year. Had a lot of problems, they got through, you know, they, they toughed it out and they, now they got a banner to hang in the high school.
I'm gonna get that up on the gym.
It is up. It went up right away.
Nice. I want to thank Kurt, Hamer, and the Zagars and all the other people that, I mean, if the ones for the adults too that come and supervise and help out and put their own resources and time and money into it, snacks, well, it's huge, so thank you guys very much.
I just have a quick question. At the start of the season or the year, do you get the pieces that you have to use or do you dream up what you have to put together to accomplish the game this year?
Well, we start out from just old scrap parts, but as we come up with ideas, we'll buy new parts and come up with a big parts list, so...
Sprocket, so explain the concept of Vex and how that works.
We, Vex has a website where they have all the parts, so they make all the motors, gears, wires, batteries, everything, and we have to use everything, but there's little things like rubber bands and zip ties that, that we can use, but everything functional has to be Vex and from Vex, so...
And the size?
Um, yeah, we have size restrictions, eighteen by eighteen, um, yeah, eighteen by eighteen or eighteen, so it fits any...
So the other schools could look completely different?
Yeah.
Or it's a different size, that's the problem, so...
You create your own ideas.
And then what'll happen at Worlds is they'll announce next year a game, so it'll be a whole different game, which means whatever robot they had to do this, that will be obsolete because there'll be a whole new task.
So we'll take the robot around. We've had them like at back to school night last year in the middle school, we had some robots there. As soon as the teams are formed and the year kicks off, this robot gets torn back down to its spare parts and starts all over from scratch.
And another thing, in the morning of the competition, they not only have a judges' interview, but they also have tech inspection. All teams' robots have to go through tech inspection as well to make sure they fit in the size, you know, requirements and everything, so they've got to do interviews and tech inspections before competition even starts. And if they don't pass tech inspection, then they have to go back to the pit and have to fix whatever doesn't pass to make it pass, so it's a pretty intense, intense day, a very long day for them, so...
Good luck at Worlds. Okay, that concludes our celebration part. I'm gonna talk a little bit about a referendum that's coming up April fourth. If people are just gonna, we've done a lot of presentations about that. So at this time, all I do is if people want to stick around, cool, if you're, if you're a resident of the village of North Fondleac and you're over eighteen, I ask you to vote. You already got some pamphlets and pieces of information. I think in our new Friendship Learning Center gym would be a perfect place to hold state or different, even up at our high school at Vex one a couple of years ago, so could really do a lot even for Vex. So, just make sure that you vote. We have one person up for reelection running on opposed, Vicki. So, thank you for running on, or running, so good luck Vicki. I'm not gonna go too much in depth, but the, everybody has seen this, we do have a referendum coming up and that's on April fourth and it's for twenty-nine point five million dollars. That would have a twenty-six cents increase on our mill rate, so on a hundred thousand dollar home, it'd be twenty-six dollars, or just over two dollars a month. And more information here, so if anybody would like at this time to leave, you're more than welcome.
Or you could stay.
Or you could stay. So vote April fourth. We're all just standing up as well as you. Thank you guys very much. I love that. So, what we can do too, so when it gets back to state, you guys decide if you want to have that home pool, otherwise I'm gonna get it free and put it right at the desk. So you decide if you want to let us hold on to it for a while, all right? All right, so you guys, thanks. From you. And then from our state, there's seven Vex. The first place, the second place, and each of those alliances are three teams and then another. One of seven from the state then. They're all high school. And then that's our, that's our high school. All right. All right, so just an update on the election and referendum. Been giving presentations, was at the village tonight, was at Friendship, County Friendship last week, no, two weeks ago. I was at the town of Fondleac last week. We have an open house tomorrow if you can make it, had one last Wednesday, Optimus last Thursday. There's gonna be another mailing coming out on the fourth, or just before the fourth, so next week it should come out, so... Rocket, well, does anybody here have any questions? I know you guys have been pretty involved in it. All right, cool. Hey, everybody out there, make sure you vote April fourth. If you have any questions, www.nftlschools.org, click on the thing that says vote April fourth, okay? Appreciate it. All right.
Pete, absentee ballots, do you know?
Absentee ballots are available. If you're in Friendship, just call the clerk. If you're in the town of Fondleac, just call the clerk. If you're in El Dorado or Lamartine, just call the clerk. And if you're in the village of North Fondleac, just go right down to the municipal offices, talk to Ms. King, they'll get you everything you need. You can vote right there at the same time.
When is that?
Last week.
Okay.
It was today. Excellent. Earlier this morning. All right, next, we have, just to give you a quick, we were just at the Village Florida trip, they did a nice citation for us going to Florida. It's Jerry and Mike's sixth trip. We're leaving Thursday morning at six o'clock, we're going to the beach on the golf side, we're gonna go to Hollywood Studios, the Magic Kingdom, we're going to Universal Studios. And then at six-thirty on Sunday Eastern time, they'll be marching down Main Street. If you follow us on Twitter, follow me on Twitter, I'll be periscoping it so you can see it live. Should be fun. We're looking at getting Owen to go, but they won't allow mascots down there. Yeah, I know, it's this whole Mickey Mouse thing or whatever. Apparently they'll be threatened by our mascot or whatever.
Sunday what time?
Six-thirty Eastern, so five-thirty Central.
The PM.
PM, yep. So it should be a lot of fun. We're also going to Cirque du Soleil, which will be cool. And then also on Saturdays, there's a two, there's a two and a half hour workshop with some of the Disney musicians, so that'll be fun. So there's, it should be a lot, a lot of good time. So, other than that, policies, just life has kind of came into things, so they're a little bit behind, but I will still work on them. It looks like we do have our student council president that is making it in. So, do you guys have any questions or administrators, do you have anything that you want to add?
If I can just add one thing, Ramsey Emo went on our CAP field trip with Jeff Stratz and Jim Dieter, and she was interested in a couple of things, and so we're really excited that we're going to be able to offer next year a, she's gotta come up with a fancy name yet, but basically a CAP class that will encompass three different units in FIAED. They're... Their archery, they have a cap for that, CPR, and then through kinesiology, a class. So she's able to, she talked to John Dobins at UW Oshkosh, as did I. And we can encompass those three units into a semester class and have four college credits. So students in high school could complete their FIAED requirement there. So we're just this week kind of finalizing wording. We've gotten the preapproval from UW Oshkosh. And then we're gonna be sharing that with our juniors and seniors. Just think it's another great opportunity for them and wanted to share with you.
And that would be UW Oshkosh college credit courses. And Paige, where are you going? So you've done cap classes. How many credits do you have going into Madison next year? Eighteen. And that's not just AD, that's from UW Oshkosh and transcript going right to UW Madison. Another great opportunity. It's a whole semester for DAF.
That's a whole pile of cash.
Yep, that's very cool. I also want to give the board a heads up. We do have some significant staffing needs. Worked through, I'd already talked to Kerry, Joe, and Deb. I've talked to Samantha, Mike, Adam, Maria, Lions and Tigers, oh my. We have, we're growing. We also have different groups of students coming up in programs that we have started addressing at the middle school. So I'm just giving you a heads up that we're looking at staffing. We're still gonna base our budget on zero growth. But we're gonna do some assumptions with revenue hopefully that we've got along with increases in salaries and increases in costs. We're looking at, currently gonna recommend some increases in staffing. That will come in April. So, but I will be sending you emails that I'd like you just to read with some of our recommendations or some of the recommendations. Because I won't tell you, we won't have a meeting that says, hey, can we go ahead and do all these things? What'll be more is that in April and May, when we're gonna have two meetings, on May the 8th and then the 22nd, is that I will make contacts forward. Maria will have an update on the budget at our April meeting. We're looking at this year. Maria, how are we looking?
We're looking good. Hopefully gonna break even.
So this year, we're looking at breaking even, which we're excited about. And then next year, we're probably gonna be looking at going in, I would predict a deficit between 150 and $300,000 with our conservative figuring. But from what we've done in the past is try to get the high quality people now, which that has paid off. So there could be some things, but I will be articulating those and sending those so you can look at them. At any time that you individually have a comment or a question, let me know. And if I see that individually, as you email me back to center only or reply to center only, if we need to have a meeting before, I would start breaking contracts, I'll let you know. But figure in April, we'll have a budget update. And then Maria will also have a budget projection based on the other positions that we're looking at adding. I don't think that we'll be approving any contracts for those positions. We will hopefully be approving contracts for art, for guidance counseling, and for math. Those are three that we have currently active right now. So just to give you a heads up that one of the things is we do have some significant staffing needs and they're unique kind of needs in different areas. And also hopefully tech add also. All right, anything else that you guys got? And great orange, or the frog thing at Friendship, we had over two, around 200 people.
350.
350 people, so over 200? And that was for a tiny one night?
200.
Right? And all the, so that's 420 plus books that went out of Orange Frog. That staff and that family's red with their kids. And today's National, I think it's World Happy Day. So it's pretty exciting. Today's World Happy Day. I wasn't feeling it the whole day, but I do now. So but great job, Margaret Lagerman, Amy Maggert, Zawitski and the team over at Friendship did a great job. And Sharon Tullner.
Yes, thank you.
Sharon Tullner, Eddie Olsen. All right, with no further ado, I would like to give my remaining time up to Ms. Paige Genovine. You stayed off to do the superintendent. You know that when she was named, they thought because there's a show where there's a page and a Genevieve that was like a construction show, that's why they thought they made it.
Oh my gosh. I forgot about that show.
Yeah. So I'll turn it over to Paige for the student council update.
Well, I see that on your, the Florida trip was already talked about. But we do leave this Thursday, the 23rd. For student council, we just finished Family Night, which was our last big ordeal that we do as a group. And that was like two weeks ago. But from now until the end of the school year, we're starting elections for the next school year. So that is the student council officers, class officers, class representatives, and we're having a few of the upperclassmen officers visiting the eighth graders in a few weeks to get the ball rolling with them. And on April 23rd and the 24th, there is a student council state convention or the WASC convention that I attended, or a camp I attended this past Sunday. This past Sunday, this past summer. And then for National Honor Society, April is Safe Driving Month. So we plan on doing something with the teachers and the students to promote safety.
How is it true that the seniors pass school all the way to the end of the school year? Do you guys get out earlier?
Yeah, mainly places.
And come back for practice.
It's coming soon.
All right, any questions? Then your attire is perfect for tonight. How many people do we have for girl's side?
Uh, we had 32 tonight.
And was that combined? Is that combined or is that just from our Fond du Lac?
Uh, that's combined from both of them. 32 tonight.
Then I can see more.
Is it random?
There is.
Are we random?
I saw that.
All right, that's all I got.
That's it. All right, next item, item K for new business. Discuss and consider the retirement request of Luanne Urban, elementary counselor.
There is, I don't think you're ever gonna find a more competent, friendly, caring, understanding person from Luanne. Not only is she good at what she does, but she knows the history of these students so well. She's one of those people that we will never replace, we'll just find somebody else. I'm so excited for her. She's got her families in Texas, Arizona, and Wisconsin, grandkids. She's got her house, so very, very excited. She's excited. She was nervous when I talked to her, but wish her well and she'll surely be missed.
All right, what's the board's pleasure?
I have a motion to accept Luanne Urban's retirement with regrets.
I'll second that. Please.
Yes.
Yes. Item number two, first reading policy changes.
Not happening. Some things have popped up, some still working on them. We will get those done. I'm gonna talk to Richard Zimmern. But we will get, we'll get all that done within the next few months. We'll pass this referendum, we'll pass some staffing evaluations, but we will get it done. We're on a good path. We already have a good policy book that we've been utilizing and keep adding to it. But we will get back on track.
No action at this time. Item three, discuss and consider extra duty contracts for Royal Smith for JV softball.
And then for JV soccer, it's Jordan Soukup. S-O-U-K-P. Jordan Soukup.
Jordan was our boys' JV coach as well as for. Jordan is finishing up his degree at UW Oshkosh in physical education. So he's very familiar with our community, with our schools. He's a good addition. Royal Smith is our math teacher here at Dams. Royal coached basketball for the JV team. Royal does a nice job. Royal has coached baseball at Fond du Lac for many years. And you know, when asked, Royal said, you know, when I signed on, I said, whatever you need me to do, I'll do. And I said, so he wanted to coach softball. He talked with Todd Stafford, he has Mario Settum.
All right, we'll take them together then. Board's pleasure for approval of Royal Smith and Jordan Soukup. All right, we'll second it. And for any special questions? Not vote, vote please?
Just one, sorry. So this is JV softball.
JV softball for Royal and JV soccer for Jordan Soukup.
The published thing says JV softball and the printed one says JV basketball.
My bad.
Extra duty contract.
Yes. All right. There are questions, questions? Vote, vote please.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
And then before Jermaine, I have two things.
Okay.
First one is April 7th, which is a Friday, at 8:30 or at 8:00 in the morning till 10:00. And then after that in Berlin, so at 8:00 to 10:00 in Berlin is, at their elementary schools, our legislative breakfast. So I'll send that out if anybody's interested to make that. And why we're having it in Berlin is because there's also a joint finance hearing there. So I'll be able to, I'll do my speak, I'll speak in front of them about advocating for different things for public schools and the budget. So you're more than welcome to stay and see that also. So that's that. And then another thing is on the 7th, also in the afternoon, I talked to Jill Gable. There's a committee that's formed that looks at the Royal Open Nation scholarships, the ornament, the calog, the aeromarque. And she'd like to get the group together at two. So if there's any board members, Steve, I know you've served and I think you have also. So it'd be at 2:00 on Friday afternoon, the 7th. So if any of you guys can make that, just put that kind of on your radar. And then I'll get that information. Jill's gonna be getting the staff at the high school together. And then I will, I'll send out a reminder email, but just kind of put it in your head. That's coming up quick.
Any traction on the signature bill?
Not yet. I think what's going on right now is I did talk to Lisa Freiberg. And Steve, you and I had sent the information in. I think what's gonna end up happening is they're going to have a bill that says if before a Class II city acquired land in your district and it's less than whatever percentage, then the board can set the number of signatures that are necessary to run. So that's what I think it's gonna be. It's gonna be something like that. What were you before this Class II city came in and had, now they're part of your district? So that, I think what's gonna happen is I know that there's more, there's some representatives and centers in the Milwaukee area, suburban Milwaukee area that are interested in that. My thought process, I know Lisa Freiberg will stay on top of that. But it's gonna probably not happen until after the budget. Because everything right now is about the budget. And what could happen now, it could be something that's rolled, it's a no-brainer. I think so. That's where there's gonna be traction. I think that as we've talked, it's beneficial to have some signatures necessary to show the commitment. But whatever that level is, we know that we've struggled with it and maybe there could be like a compromise. But there is, there's something I, I would, I would, I would bet that there's something that's gonna be done. But I think with the biennial budget upfront, that's the big thing.
All right, so with no other business before the board, I will entertain a motion to join. All right, vote, vote please.
So that's the.
Yes.
Chisen.
Yes.
Yes.
And for your turn.
Thank you. Thanks. Did some digging.